...to the 28th meeting of the board of all. And at this time, we're going to be in preparation. Have we finally just asked if it's due to us and our committee of blessings and protection this evening, my ladies, and do this thing that we need to do as a city, state, and nation. We have these very tried out to remain afraid. I have. Which story has the question of the flag of our country, let's read it, is the flag of the United States of America, and to reform of its lands, by one nation, chief of government, and liberty, justice for all. And first, you call the role.
Alderman Bingle, here. Alderwoman Harris.
Present.
Alderman Astor.
Here.
Mayor Outlaw.
Here.
Alderman Kinsey.
Here.
Alderman Best.
Here.
Alderman Odom.
Here.
Okay, we'd like to welcome everybody tonight. Any more members have anything to say before we get started? See, I'm done. Let's go to the set agenda item number three.
Now, Mr. Mayor, I made motion that we adopt the consent agenda.
Second. Have a motion and second is a discussion. See, and then let's have a round with all favor of motion say aye.
Aye.
All votes the same. The motion carries. Mr. Stevens, let's go to item number five.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number five is the consideration forward to adopt the resolution authorizing the city managers to sign up for a regular NPA for architectural services for the city hall annex. As you know, we've been kind of moving forward with this amid all of the coronavirus issues that are going on. We did send out a request for qualifications for designing construction services associated with the proposed city hall annex project. In the year of 2011, the organization selected a vote from our board. A call for the service will give $749,000. That was negotiated to represent 540,300 dollars that I paid and 240,700 dollars for the construction operations. The resolution authorized the city manager to make some new contract with NPA for city four, fifty, four, four. You know, those moving in your packet, uh, is one thing that I'm not the RMR process. Have any questions?
More than a question.
No, ma'am, but I would like to make a comment. I think everybody knows for years, especially in the last two years, we have been advocating for an elevator in city hall. It has been imperative that our disabled citizens and some of our elderly citizens are able to access the courtroom on the second floor to attend our meetings and for other important functions that we regularly held in city hall. So I want to make sure that every, all citizens are clear on my position and that I support an elevator to the empty grid. But the fact being said, these are unusual times. This is something we never saw coming at us. And I will tell you, my fellow, fellow business, businesses are hurting. Our citizens are hurting. They have either lost their jobs or been furloughed from their jobs. They're fearful. And what I would ask my colleagues on the board, if you would do so kind of, is just delay this decision for about 90 days. Let us regroup in about 90 days and decide to move forward at that point. I mean, we are going to be having a lot of concerns with SaaS tax loss that we lose and other funds. And I, I for one, struggled with this all weekend long. Do not feel good with appropriating $750,000 at this moment in time when everything seems to be falling down around us. So that would be my motion. I agree. Not do wait, just delay this decision for a period of up to 90 days.
My second, so you're saying you want to take off the agenda right now?
Well, I would just say I would get tabled. I would like to table this item for 90 days.
I said to that.
There's too much to incorporate both five and six.
Well, my question would be to Mary and to the city manager. I have an answer. You know, raise the fund this year, have the project funding leave it in there. It's something, I do want to revisit this. It's not that I'm saying, no, you don't want to do this, but it's because of that, I would cancel it for some time to let us get a better handle on what our economic situation is going to be and how we're going to move forward with all of this in this crazy environment we're in right now.
Um, item number six, as I read, is essentially just a renaming of the, of the, of the project fund from what it started out as, is just a city hall, you know, elevator project to now this has become more of an annex. I don't think the naming of is, is an issue, even if we were to change the scope, because ultimately it's going to require some kind of annex to build an elevator if we just did an elevator only. So we just wanted to change the scope of the project so it's a little bit more defined as to what the actual project is versus just an elevator. So item number six can be adopted without item number five with no problem.
Okay.
So my motion would just pertain to item number five at this time, ma'am.
Okay. Is there further discussion on that item? See, and then I'll approve the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Is it a roll call or is it a, I'm sorry, is it a roll call or is it a voice vote?
I think we can handle that with the voice vote.
Yeah.
Okay.
No action, so I'm.
Okay.
Basically, a motion table for 90 days.
Okay, let's go to item number six.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number six is a, an amendment to capital project ordinance to rename the city hall elevator project fund as the city hall annex building project fund. As you recall, the, the ordinance was adopted in May of 2019 to establish this capital project fund for designing construction of an elevator at city hall. Obviously, the scope's changed. We want to align the naming of this fund to be with, consistent with what the project's one of these. So essentially, just a renaming of the project fund.
Uh, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the amendment to a capital project organi- ordinance to rename the city hall elevator project fund as the city hall annex building project fund.
Motion and second is their discussion. See, and then let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris.
Yes.
Alderman Astor.
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw.
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
Alderman Best.
Yes.
Alderman Odom.
Yes.
Motion carries. Let's go to item number seven, Mr. Stevens.
Mayor, item number seven is resolution approving an amendment to the lease agreement with the New Bern Craven County area farmer's market. As I brought to you at our, at our last virtual meeting that we had, the, the New Bern Craven County farmer's market has requested that their monthly rental payment of $500 be, I guess, forgiven to some extent for the, for the six months that will be from June, I'm sorry, July 1 until December. The reason being they're already paid up for the six months of this year. However, they haven't been able to operate to their, their fullest extent and nor because of the crowd, reduction in crowd sizing and things like that, been able to lease the facility in any way for events. So they have requested this and I think the board was amenable to considering that. So it's before you tonight for your ultimate approval to make sure that they do not have to pay that 500 per month for the next six months, starting in July 1.
I just had a, um, I think, Mark, you kind of touched on it, but, um, I just, I had a few people reach out trying to understand why they wanted to, um, put a hold on the lease because they do see that they're open and, you know, when you go to the farmer's market, you are still able to, you know, purchase a booth. But I understand, um, the circumstance, but I just wanted to, you know, put it out there that some people were concerned why we were doing this or why we're voting to suspend the payments right now.
They are still operating the farmer's market to some capacity, but obviously they're limited as to what kind of, of goods and services that they can, they can sell there. Ultimately, farmer's markets are meant for selling of, during this time, are meant for selling of, of fruit, vegetables, and any kind of foods, not your typical, as they said in their letter, the, the other things that are homemade candles and, and different trinkets and things like that that they sell in addition. So rental of those spaces obviously is down at this time.
I would also think that it was, had an effect on their leasing out to private functions as well.
That's correct. Weddings, weddings, events, all that stuff because of the, the size of, of crowds that are limited in the state right now, that has essentially gone away as well.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the resolution approving an amendment to the lease agreement with the New Bern Craven County area farmer's market.
Second. Motion and second is their discussion. See, and then let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom.
Yes.
Alderman Best.
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw.
Yes.
Alderman Astor.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris.
Yes.
Alderman Bingle.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number eight.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number eight is a resolution for the board's consideration to, to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement for the purchase and sale of real property that's located at Broad Street and Gaston Boulevard. This property that we've identified is tax parcel eight dash zero one two dash 12,000, eight dash zero one two dash one three one, eight dash zero one zero one two dash one two six, eight dash zero one two dash one two zero zero one, and finally, eight dash zero one two dash three two two. We're looking to purchase this property for some future use. The resolution that's included in your packet includes a map and shows the agreement as, as requested for execution by the board. The agreement is for the purchase of property at this corner, which is basically between Gaston Boulevard and Third Avenue, consists of about three and a half acres, if I'm correct, Scott. I think somewhere across on, on this one and then the next item combined, that's on your agenda. This first item is, has a purchase price of $455,000. And the, as I said, staff and the board have kind of identified that which is for government services. And at this time, I'm happy to answer any kind of questions the board may have.
I just have a question, Mark, or to Scott. Can we put these together as one, as one vote or do they have to be voted on individually?
You can do it together if it's unanimous.
I see. Okay.
And if you want me to cover the other one, if y'all want to do that, I can definitely cover the other one. The other, the other one is item number nine. It's, it's an adjacent parcel. Their, their requested asking price for that parcel is $40,000. That is a 1.08 acre parcel that's identified by tax number eight dash zero one two dash one one nine. And, and ultimately, this would, this would make a contiguous piece of property there. It's approximately three and a half acres.
Question, Mark.
Sure.
How soon would this take place?
Um, my understanding of the agreement that Scott has drafted up would be, there would be a 30 day due diligence period and a 15 day closing period. Obviously, if we do our due diligence and everything prior to that, we can close on it as quickly as we want to. But ultimately, we, we have allowed ourselves 45 days, 30 days for due diligence, 15 days to close thereafter.
Thank you. Very good.
Anybody else? All right. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement for the purchase and sale of real property located on Broad Street and Gaston Boulevard and a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement for the purchase and sale of real property located on Gaston Boulevard.
Second. Motion and second is their further discussion. See, and then let's have a roll call starting with, somebody say.
Somebody's phone.
Alderman Bingle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris.
Yes.
Alderman Astor.
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw.
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
Alderman Best.
Yes.
Alderman Odom.
Yes.
Motion carries. Anything else on that item, Mr. Stevens?
Hey, sir, that's it. Scott and I will work and get the draft finalized and executed by you and then ultimately do our due diligence period and cut them a check for our, um, escrow or estimated value. I guess, what is that, I'm sorry, down payment, I don't know why I said estimated value, down payment that we have and we'll get rolling on our due diligence period.
Okay. Let's go to appointments starting with Alderman Bingle.
None tonight, sir.
Alderwoman Harris.
None tonight, Mayor.
Oh, thank you. Alderman Astor.
None tonight, Mayor.
Alderman Kinsey.
Not tonight, sir.
Uh, Alderman Best.
None.
And Alderman Odom.
Uh, no appointments, just a question, sir. On, on the two appointments we have with the Appearance Commission and the library, is that board appointments? So it's not award specific?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, does anybody have any possibilities for those three positions? Yeah, I'm sorry, that was the Appearance Commission?
Yes.
Yeah, I may have somebody. I'll, I'll ask and let you know it next week. And the library board.
Yeah, also too, on Appearance Commission, Foster, you're on the line. Sometimes you have a list of people that have expressed interest. I would appreciate you passing that along if you still have a list. Um, and the library board, it'll be really hard to replace Ms. State and she's been such, you know, I serve on that board representing the city and she has done such an amazing job, um, serving that board and she loves the library. So that's what we need, somebody that really loves the library and understands the importance of the library in New Bern and Craven County. So citizens listening, I would ask if you're interested to contact our city clerk.
Okay, attorneys report. Does it report, Mayor? City managers report.
Uh, just a few things real quickly, Mayor. Obviously, we as staff are continuing to, you know, move forward with all of our different COVID-related activities. We were still trying to practice our social distancing within our offices and everything. So we, we, I think we're doing well, operating well. I know Mary's had some fun times over there at utility business office on some of her big paydays at the, at utility business office, but the police department's worked well with her to get lanes established to help with traffic control and things like that. So we're working through them. Obviously, these are, these are new times for everyone, challenging times, but we seem to be doing fairly well through this and a lot of our projects are continuing to move forward. I know Matt's got a lot of projects going on with Public Works and, and Charlie's got a large electric project over at Trent Road that's coming near its end. They, they actually have installed that large transformer that was purchased some time ago this, this past, or I guess, week before last, and they're finalizing work over this past week to get it finalized as much as we can. That should be coming into service here relatively soon. Working with Duke Power on getting their stuff finalized on that as well. We have, um, an update, I, I wanted to get Matt on here real quick. He's, he's unmuted. I wanted him to speak real quickly. There's been some requests of the board over the past several months on several different NC DOT related requests and items. So I wanted to pass it over to him real quick and kind of give an update on all of those different requests and where DOT stands. Come so.
Thanks, Mark. Real quick, just give you an update, there's about five different items I've been reaching out to DOT to kind of get an update on. First one is the dedicated left turn lane on the Pembroke exit head to Highway 70 West. I talked to Steve Hamilton earlier today. He indicated to me that he's actually been out to the site, um, doing evaluation and didn't, didn't find any issues with the, the lane. So talk with Alderman Best this morning, she ran into some issues yesterday at our peak hours. So I reached back out to Steve and he had not been out to the site during peak hours. So we asked him to go out there and kind of revisit the situation, you know, between three and five o'clock in the afternoon and between seven and nine in the morning. Kind of lean in during the peak hours and see if he sees the issues that we're seeing during those peak hours. So that's kind of the update on that one. The other one is the Alfred Coming in Bridge, the, the scheduled opening and closing that we've been working on for several months. I did get a response from DOT. That is all. Paperwork has been finalized, finalized by the, the attorneys and it's now been sent over to the Admiral for final signatures. And once that's been taken place, they'll then be put on the federal registry. So hopefully by this summer, you'll see some, some update to that and a scheduled for, scheduled opening and closing with the bridge. The other one that some of you mayor may not be aware of is the on-ramp on the Highway 70 West coming from downtown over by the Outback. DOT had a washout there during Hurricane Florence. And at that time, they did a repair, but when they did the repair to the bank, all they did was gravel the shoulder of the road. So we've received several complaints about that. Talking back to DOT, they finally have got the approval to spend the money to make the rest of that repair. So hopefully, they tell me the next week or two that you can see that repaired up to the 70 on-ramp from downtown. And then the, the final issue was Alderman Best's request for reflectors. We had done, we talked about the paving that was done on the Highway 70 and also on Blumbery Road and they had gone back already and put the thermoplastic stripe in to make the lanes easier to see. DOT also responded to that as what, as well today and indicated, once they got, once they hit the final layer of asphalt on Highway 70, they will be adding reflectors. At this point, they don't know that they were going to be adding them to Blumbery Road, but they're going to reach back out to the district engineer and find out if they can get permission to do that as well. So that's kind of the five projects I've been tasked with getting updates on and that's where we sit. If you've got any questions, I'll try to answer them the best I can.
Mark, I have a question for you. The Colony Drive in Lewis Boulevard, have you heard anything else about that culvert being replaced there with the caving in?
The, we, we sent that, we basically sent that report that we found, when we found it, we sent it directly over to them. And within probably 48 hours, they had a group of DOT personnel and DOT engineers there on site. I know they've done some temporary patchwork or repair work. I haven't got any confirmation that they're going to replace the entire pipe underneath the road or if they're just going to leave it as the patch that they've done. I can certainly reach out to maintenance engineer and see what their plans are moving forward if there are any.
Okay. Well, let me know what you find out, please.
I will.
Mayor, Matt, I just want to thank you for handling this for me because I've had residents within the Pembroke community and some of my constituents as well. And their main concern was the, the left turn signal there at the 70 and Pembroke exit. As I expressed to you earlier, I was over there in an area yesterday and I had to sit there through three traffic light changes and then I still could not make that left turn. I had to proceed on over to First Street. So I really do thank you for getting back, getting in touch with NC DOT and how you handled that so expeditiously. I really do appreciate all your hard work and I know the constituents and residents do as well.
The, just real quick, I did have one more, just give you a quick little update on was the intersection of Blumbery and Yarmouth Drive. The, the left here and lane there, that's not a dedicated left, but the roads kind of offset each other. We made that request to Steve Hamilton. Steve has, has come back and basically said he's working on that personally himself. He says he knows that the intersection where the, um, the publics was put in and built to the state standards, but he's, he's looking at it personally as well and what they can do to kind of make that intersection forward. So he's working on that himself. Yes, sir.
Hey, Matt, um, I was going to ask you this during new business, but I'll go ahead since you're on. Can you give us an update on what's happening on Old Cherry Point, I mean, excuse me, Old Airport Road? And then I have another one for you after that.
Uh, yeah, Old Airport Road, we have started, just started the construction phase. By a week or two ago, the surveys were out there, they've scraped out the end of the pavement. We started building utilities, but the contractors actually came in this week. They've started stripping grass to begin digging some of the new ditches that are going to be located near Thurman Road. And they've also had their demo crew in there removing some of the tree vegetation that's got to be removed. They started that on Monday of this week. So just now getting started, starting to make some progress and it's, it's going to be a long 10 or 12 months, but our project's moving forward.
And that project's going to take 10 to 12 months to do?
Yeah, I thi- I think it's, I think it's a 90-month window for the contractor.
Okay, wow. While you have Steve Hamilton on the telephone tomorrow morning, would you please ask him about the traffic light signal at Thurman Road and 70 Eastbound? I've, I've received notification now twice that that was going to be repaired in the next 30 days and so far, I haven't seen anything happen over there. Would you just kind of confirm as to when that work's going to take place for me? They're going to put those turn lanes in for us, turn signals.
I'll see if I can get that tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
Mr. Stevens, did Mark, did you have something else?
Um, the only other thing I had, Mayor, was I just wanted to follow up. Our next board meeting, we will have a budget amendment, obviously, for items number eight and nine. So obviously, being that large sum of money, we would need to bring a budget in it. Y'all just say you'll be expecting it and know what it's for. That'll probably be allocated from general fund balance until the point to where we determine if we need to do any kind of financing or whatever, but it would be our attempt to take that from fund balance at this time.
Okay.
Just want, that's the only other thing that I had and I'm happy to answer any questions there in new business if the board has.
Board, yes.
Mayor, I guess this would be appropriate time to question Mr. Stevens on, I've, I've had many questions from the citizens regarding the powers or pow- or not powers of the city to open it, to not open it, to do different things within our city. So it would be helpful, Mark, if you could address that. I had a couple of conversations today and, you know, the difference of when a governor makes an executive order, what a city can and cannot do. My understanding is we can make a stricter order, but we cannot lessen the power of the order made. But if you would address that so our citizens could understand, whether we agree with it or not, I, I want our citizens to understand what our powers or lack of powers really are.
Uh, yes, ma'am, and, and thank you for asking that. And I, I know that there probably has been a lot of questions from the public regarding that. And, and a lot of it has stemmed from some of the letters you've seen, a lot of the counties or maybe some cities requesting that the governor consider reopening North Carolina. Obviously, you know, they have, they have professional staff who are making these decisions, looking at the trends, looking at the caseloads, whatever, that are, that are assisting the governor and making these decisions. But we have an obligation, if you read through every one of those executive orders, especially with regards to the latter parts of it, where it talks about the enforcement of it is, is, you know, relative to class two misdemeanors and, and things like that, we have an obligation to enforce those laws and enforce those executive orders by the governor. As you stated, we do, we do not have the ability to lessen what his executive order is. We have the ability to make our force stringent, which is the case you've seen with State Emerald Isle and, and a lot of the beaches along Carrick County where they closed their beaches. You know, they closed beach access points, they closed things like that. You know, we as a city, we could close our, our recreation center, which we've done. We can close our, our parks if we wanted to, but we can't lessen what those restrictions are that are, are established by the governor through the executive order. So you're correct in that. Beyond that, I'm happy to, you know, answer any other questions, but essentially what, what we're trying to do is our police department's trying to remain proactive as much as they can. They've been taking around flyers on each one of the executive orders, especially if it impacts businesses. You know, here's how to answer, you know, here's how to get some of your questions answered, here's contact numbers, here's how we interpret what these executive orders are. And it's their job to enforce those. And there's been some cases where some people have made some phone calls and, and ultimately, our, our police department respond to those. They look into those matters and if they're practicing appropriately based on what the executive order says, then obviously, there's not a whole lot that we can do about it. But if they are noncompliant with what the executive order says, then we do have the ability to, to enforce that. So other than that, I, I really don't know what else to add, but, but that's, that's essentially what we've been doing. And for us to, to act outside of what the executive, governor's executive order is, I don't know what the ramifications of that would be, but I'm sure that they could potentially be funding mechanisms through the state and so forth and so on. But at this point, I wouldn't recommend testing it and, and moving forward.
Well, if anybody, I, I just want to go on record saying I don't agree. It's time for us to get back to work in a safe and measured manner. I want to acknowledge the fact that this virus is dangerous, it's deadly, and it's re- real, but livelihoods are real as well, and the lives of our citizens in being able to provide for their families, put food on the table, pay their rent, pay their medical bills, whatever they have is real. And it's time for us to go back to work. I'm a proponent of that. I believe if you don't feel safe coming out of your house, stay home. But I also believe that businesses should take measures to social distance, do the things that would make people feel comfortable to come into their business or have them conduct business. So my hope is that the governor is going to get the message from many people in our area, from letters, from our county and other people, saying it's time to let us open in a responsible, measured manner. And, you know, the way it looks right now, his orders, restaurants and other functions, our, our salons, our barber shops, it could be the end of June into July, probably the end of June. We don't see full service for restaurants in the state of North Carolina until August. And that is going to put people out of business and people out of work. So this is just my very public statement. I apologize to my colleagues, but I am concerned. I've had a number of business owners in my office in tears because they're about to lose everything, their life savings that they put into their businesses, and this is, this is as much a life that I'm concerned about as I am about someone's health. So I'm walking in the middle. So I just want to say that if we can get to the point where we can get open, I think we need to do it. Thank you. I'm sorry, Alderman Best.
Uh, no problem, Alderman Bingo. All right, you know, I'll piggyback off of some what, what you have mentioned. Um, and you know, this COVID-19 pandemic has really put a, caused a severe hardship on our citizens and this country as well. And, and I too agree that, you know, I feel that now our businesses should start reopening and start operating and bringing employees back to work, so that these employees can have a paycheck and take care of their families. But then again, too, we all, I do respect Governor Cooper's executive orders, you know, he receives information from his directions from the White House and from the public health data. But also in saying that, I also feel that each county's cases are totally different, and at this point, I feel that if the counties are receiving individual data for their counties, and if, and if the numbers are decreasing, then I feel that the county should, has the responsibility to impose any restrictions or anything that's necessary so that we can get our businesses back up and operating. And at this point, I think it should be enough up to each perspective county based on the public health data that they receive for their counties so that we can get our businesses back up and running. And I just hope nothing comes into play, another executive order comes through and supersedes our target date now of May 8. But I know it has caused a lot of financial hardship, and hopefully, we, the city and other cities and counties will regain some normalcy as soon as possible.
Anybody else?
Mayor, I'd just like to make a couple of comments. A couple of meetings ago, I gave a little bit of a soapbox speech about small business and how big of an impact that is on our country, but it's a big impact on our city as well, just as it is our country. And, you know, if you go out and, and take a ride, it's hard not to pass a nail salon or hair salon or locally owned cafe or restaurant. So I agree that there's got to be some leniency given. Alderman Best, I think the problem, and correct me if I'm wrong, Alderman Bingo probably knows this best, but I don't think May 8 is when restaurants or hair salons or nail salons are going to be open. It's more of a phase one, which is, I think parks were mentioned.
Right. Phase one, two, and three, yeah.
Yeah, I, I, correct. Yeah, I just want to go on record and say I agree, and I fully support the county commissioners and the action that they took. They unanimously passed a resolution asking the governor for that county control, because we all know that Craven County is different from Columbus County and anywhere else. So I, I support that. And also, I, I just want to share with you, I, I saw something on social media, I took a screenshot, and it's a Venn diagram. Had, had to remember what that actually meant, but it's, it's a Venn diagram, and there's three circles. And the first circle says people taking coronavirus seriously. The second one says people very concerned about impending economic devastation. And the third one says people worried about expansion of authoritarian government policies. And it's okay if you're in the middle, and I, I agree with Alderman Bingo. That's where I am. It's certainly a serious item that we need to be cautious of and take precautions as necessary, but we are also seeing complete devastation of our economy, and we've got to have sympathy for that side of the equation. Thank you.
Okay, let's go to the new business, starting with Alderman Odom.
I do not have any, sir. Thank you.
Okay, Alderman Best?
Basically, I just covered it.
Okay. Alderman Kansas?
I saw the echo of Alderman Bingo and Alderman Best and Alderman Odom. I'm in that category myself as a business person that is not working, and that we need to try to buckle down and get things together and get things running again, where people can actually go back to work to earn a living. It is very, very sad thing right now for a lot of people. It's a lot of people probably will not go back to work. There'll probably be a few that will. And it's also an economic burden on the city as well, based on what's coming in for us to run our city. So we need to really try to find out what can we do to make this thing go away and make this thing work for everything. That's, that's where I'm at right now.
Okay. Alderman Aster?
Uh, yeah. Mr. City Manager, if you don't mind, we had a FEMA update meeting today. Could you kind of brief the, the board and all set of citizens on where we're standing with FEMA and the project worksheets that are outstanding?
Sure. Uh, the project worksheets that are outstanding, and let me go to this spreadsheet behind. We, there's, there's quite a few. I mean, we've got a really significant amount of projects that we've had for this, this particular event, which is Hurricane Florence, to the tune of about 40, 40, 40-ish projects that we had. Obviously, some of those we have received funding for and payments from FEMA on. Some of them are still in process and pending. Some of them are close to being obligated, and others, like the ditch project, are just now kind of in its infancy of, of really kicking off and, and getting some of the damage descriptions and inventions and all that stuff done so that we can move forward with actually getting all the repairs. All told, you know, if you take into account Stanley White Rec Center, if you take into account the ditches, you take into account all the different projects, that storm's going to be somewhere in the 62, 60 to 63 million dollars range, you can basically factor. With, with the large portion of that, about 30 million of that being the ditch project, you have about seven or eight million dollars of that is the Stanley White Recreation Center project. You have quite a, quite a bit of different parking rec projects. You have quite a, quite a bit of, of other projects that consist of manual labor, force account labor, as we call it, in, in the submission of the project. Electric fund, water fund, sewer fund, all of those had different projects that, that essentially we've submitted some things for obligation from, from FEMA to pay for our expenses. To date, we're looking at about 3.9 million dollars of money that's been received. Out of pocket, we're probably somewhere in the 13 and a half million dollars spent. We do have some pretty significant projects in the queue right now to be obligated. Some of those are, are force account labor projects, the electric project that consisted of all the different entities that came and assisted us with restoration of services. Obviously, that's a lot of work to compile and get the information from all of their accounting departments and all of their different force account labor codes and everything else that they use and their, their, you know, when you look at Raleigh and Charlotte and everybody else or whoever that came and helped us during that, that, that storm, we have to get all of their information, what all their fringe benefits are for each one of those employees. All that stuff has to be compiled and submitted in. So it takes a lot of work to get all that stuff submitted to FEMA the way they want it so that it can be obligated. But right now, we're looking at somewhere right around 3.9 to 4 million dollars that we've received in funding. We've got an additional roughly 2 million dollars, probably, in insurance that we've received. So we're, let's, let's call it 6 million right now out of about a 13 million dollar out-of-pocket expense. Now, obviously, moving forward, that, that 13 million is going to continue to grow because you've got Stanley White Rec Center, you've got the, the ditch projects that are going to happen. So that, that in total is about 37 million dollars in addition to the 13, which brings us up to 6 million.
Mark, let me, let me just ask you, and I'm not sure if you have these figures in front of you or not, but just for the general fund, you have an estimated amount of expenditures and how much we've received back or what we're going to receive back from FEMA, and let's exclude the, the 428s and the enterprise funds.
Okay. If you, if you exclude those, and I, it's a, this is a moving, it, it's kind of hard to take out just all of this stuff, but let me, let me just try to, 7.7 away. So if I take out Stanley White, if I take out Henderson Park Restrooms, and if I take out the BP Building, those are the ones that we had done a 428 process on. So let me, let me just add those up real quick. That's a, a 3, 12, 1. So you're looking at about, let's just call it 4 million. That's, that's basically an estimated cost that I'm looking at, 4 million dollars, and we've gotten general fund dollars in the amount of about 518,000 out of 4 million if you take away the 428 process projects. If you, all in total, you're talking about 12 million dollars, so you'd have to take out and back out about 8 million dollars, which is, or 8 and a half million dollars, which is the, the restrooms, the Henderson Park, the, the, the Stanley White Rec Center and the BP Building.
Does that include the enterprise fund money?
Excuse me?
Does that include the enterprise fund?
It does not include enterprise. That's general fund on.
Okay.
Mark, is there any way that you could get that information on paper so it's sent to us?
I, I can send it to you, but it's extremely complex and very.
No, 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 no.
I mean, when you, when you're talking, you, you essentially, and, and you've got to be a Mary or a Lori in order to, to, to really dive down and understand it really, really well, but I'm happy to send you these spreadsheets. I don't know it's necessarily a document of public consumption, but.
No, 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 I'm not asking for all of that, Mark. I'm just asking for the breakdown of the FEMA.
I have that document.
Okay.
And that's the reason why, that's the reason why I asked Mark to explain it.
Okay.
Because it's extremely difficult to understand the FEMA's forms and documents and everything, and how they got, how they have it broken down. We might be better off if Mark would just send us a quick little memo saying, this is what we've got outstanding, this is what we've got in. That might be easier than trying to look through, because that, that other document is so confusing.
I, I think between, I think between Mary and Lori and myself, we could probably put together just a quick, maybe a one-pager to kind of give you an update as to each fund, what we have out of pocket, what we've received to date, what we've got in the queue to be obligate. But we've got several projects that are pretty close to being obligated. Most of the insurance has been paid out at this point, or maybe a little bit of lingering things, but most of that's probably been paid out by the way we structured it and utilized the insurance proceeds that we received. But all in all, you know, we're looking at a total out-of-pocket across all the different funds of about a 13.8 million dollar, and we've got about 3.9, it was called 4 million, that we've received back. 2 million in insurance. So right now, we're, we're sitting at about 6.1 million dollars probably that we've gotten back out of a 13.8 million dollar spend. So that leaves about 17, or I'm sorry, about 7 million dollars left. So we, we can try to summarize this a little bit and send it out to the board in like a one-page memo, kind of update if that works for you.
Yeah, that'll work. Thank you.
Anything else? Alderman Aster?
Uh, no, thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir. Alderman Harris?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few things. One is we, Alderman Odom and Alderman Aster, we had a meeting for the SOR, so I just wanted to update you. I think it was productive in tune of we realized that we really need to have the county commissioners at the table to kind of have a definite decision on what we think is best in regards to these contracts. Secondly, there is a Facebook group called Make a Joyful Noise. Everybody on May 1st is going to go outside and either sing a song or play an instrument around 3:00 PM. I think the community came together with everything that's going on. They just want to kind of inspire people to, you know, have a joyful noise. There's, there are some people that are turning it into wanting to do it for our seniors. The third thing is I just want to thank Chief Summers and all of the police that went out the other day and went to all the seniors and visited them and passed out signs. I thought that was great. What else I have? I wanted to say Happy Mother's Day to everybody because the next time we have a meeting is May 12. And then lastly, I understand how my colleagues feel about what's going on. My views are a little different, but I just want everybody to make sure they continue to follow the CDC guidelines, stay protected, and let's continue to flatten the curve.
Alderman Bingo?
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have some good news, and if you bear with me for about three minutes, I'm going to share with you a video, and Colleen's going to help me. So as many of you know, I sit on the UNC TV Board of Trustees, and I got noticed yesterday that there was, there's a film festival in the state of North Carolina. It's called the Longleaf Film Festival. It's a very prestigious film festival, and the winner for the best historical documentary was a piece about New Bern and the Civil War and the freed slaves, and that how we were the center of freedom for black people in the world. And it won the best picture. It's a most prestigious award, so they sent me a little clip. So, Colleen, if you'll help me, I hope you all will be as proud of it as I was because it really highlighted what's so special about New Bern. So, Colleen, can you play that for just a minute? It's the clip from the presentation and the director who won the award. Are we able to do that, Colleen?
This is the third year of our History Plus Award, which is a nod to Longleaf's home base, the North Carolina Museum of History. And trees must reflect or depict a topic in history from a unique perspective of insight and accuracy. 2020 History Plus Film Best Documentary, Michael O'Connell, New Bern, Spirit of Freedom. This film features historian Earl Ives and David Siselski, both North Carolina natives. The film reveals the leadership and the courage that New Bern, North Carolina's African-American community played in the creation of the emancipation proclamation.
(SINGING) In the water, we sing it with perfect, perfect, the waters we cherish. In the water, you know God's gonna come.
New Bern is the birthplace of freedom because this takes place in the South. We can see a thousand movies in glory about Boston, but that's, that's easy pie in Civil War talk. The rubber hits the road down south, and New Bern is ground zero.
To me, the Civil War is one of the most extraordinary moments in New Bern's history, and by itself, the events that happened in New Bern. make New Bern, to me, one of the most important historical sites for the struggle for freedom anywhere in America. I love seeing the monuments to American freedom and liberty when I visit Washington, DC. I know I'm biased because I'm from Craven County, but Washington, DC has nothing on New Bern. You know, it is, it is a wellspring of American freedom and the struggle for liberty that I think can be an inspiration to us all.
This is where the Union Inspector's claim, and that claim transforms over time and evolves into freedom for everyone. And there's not only freedom of the formerly enslaved people. It's important to note that we were freed from the scourge of slavery, everyone. You, for example, couldn't buy collard greens from me as a black farmer if I traveled from Craven County to Jones County. It was a slave code. Couldn't do it. I could not, I obviously talked to you and looked at you in the eyes as a slave code. Couldn't do it. These are the types of things that I'm sure many white people felt uneasy enforcing, but they were mandated to enforce those or they were subject to the whims and to the punishment and to the slave codes also. So the 13th Amendment frees all of us from the scourge of slavery.
Hey, everybody. Thanks so much for this award for New Bern: Spirit of Freedom. Got to thank the Longleaf Festival crew for making this happen virtually in the midst of these extraordinary times. It's fantastic work they're doing. And of course, UNC TV for creating the opportunity for me to make these documentaries. The logline for this film is what comes to me if I was going to say something about it. And basically, that is, as the lens through which we view history goes wider over the passage of time, new truths submerge. And New Bern's role leading up to the Emancipation Proclamation is not a history that I learned in middle school. And I hope you get a chance to watch it. The role of North Carolina's indigenous historians in this film, Earl Eames and David Siselski, they are truly treasures for everyone in the state and are the essence of telling this story. So thank you very much.
2020 History Plus Film Best Narrative, Denver Hollingsworth Deserted. This film, shot in the eastern part of North Carolina, is set in 1865, right at the end of the Civil War. Two brothers desert from their unit after a deadly battle and seek refuge in an abandoned cabin. The enemy is closing in, but it's not who or what they expect.
This is a great city. We have been on the forefront of so many things for so many generations. And I hope we can continue to be on that forefront. But I'm really proud of it. The full documentary is being prepared and sent to me. So I hope that we could maybe, when all this COVID stuff is finished, sponsor an opportunity for our citizens to see the full documentary. So I hope you enjoyed it, but I thought we would end on a good, positive note. Thank you, Mayor.
Um, Mayor, I have one more thing. Sabrina, do you want to tell everybody what you're gonna be doing in May at ECU?
I'm not because they canceled graduation.
No, it's gonna be virtual.
I know, but there, I know, I'm so sad. I was, I, so what Jamie's referring to is I was asked to be the guest speaker for the College of Hospitality Management. And I was gonna be the graduation speaker, but because of everything, it was canceled. But thank you for Jamie, and they're gonna save me for another year, they said.
Aw.
Thank you for that, Sabrina. But thank you. Hope you enjoyed the little film.
I do.
Anything else, Alderman Bingo?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay. Any other new business at this time?
Mayor, if I could ask Mr. Stevens to put him on the spot here about the small business loan pool that we've had some discussion about. I believe you probably need some direction from the board if it's our desire to do so.
Yes, recently, we were approached by...
Hey, everybody. I'm Denver Hollingsworth. I'm the writer and director of Deserted. First off, I want to say a huge thank you to Longleaf Film Festival. This is a huge honor, especially so because I'm a native of North Carolina. And a lot of my cast and crew are from North Carolina as well. We actually shot this film in eastern North Carolina. And I'm standing in front of the cabin we shot the film in. I want to say a huge thank you to my cast and crew. We shot this on a very, very cold December night. And without their help, I could not have done this. This was a very low production budget, and we really needed a good team around to create a film like that. And I certainly had a great team behind me. I'm a History Buff, and I already like Civil War narrative history. So what was really cool about creating and shooting this film is that on the very land we stand on now, the same events or similar events that Hapley had already played out in real life as well. So again, I want to say thank you to Longleaf Film Festival. And thank you again to my cast and crew who helped me make this possible. And I hope to be in person at next year's event.
2020 Narrative Feature, Best Drama, Robert Underhill: Fever Dreams Moving. In the vein of Twilight Zone and Tales from the Crypt, four spellbinding vignettes of suspense draw the viewer into fever dreams.
Hey, I already did it on that project, didn't I? I said you'd show it to me when you got further along. That was a couple of weeks ago.
Well, if I could just get some quality time to finish it. I mean, with all this equipment here, I could just film it myself.
Simon, this stuff is really expensive.
I would just need to borrow a video camera for a few days. Maybe I'll be out of stuff for good. It was the only time I was in this job. Need to be out in LA if the action's happening. She walked here, thinks I'm wasting her time. And their work department for some extra funds. And I think I've identified that because obviously, the board, nor do myself or any of my staff in the administration area have been able to do any traveling for the latter parts of the year here because of the COVID virus. So we have enough money in our travel budgets combined with the board and the administration department where we could probably cover this $25,000. Obviously, it requires a budget amendment if the board wants to move forward with this. And we could have that on your next agenda to do so. If the board wants to apply some funds to assist small businesses, much like Swiss Bear's looking to do with $100,000 for MasterCard.
Alderman Harris.
Um, two questions. I don't know who was in the meeting because this is new to me. But is there any, do I reach out to Lynn personally to find out how they were able to switch this money from Hurricane Florence recovery to what's going on now? I'm just confused on how you're able to do that.
They, they, they made a phone call and specifically asked if that's something that MasterCard would be willing to allow them to do. I think the intent would be, like I said, this is a loan program. So hopefully, these businesses will be able to bridge the gap and that money will be restored back into that fund so that that money can still continue to be used towards recovery efforts if needed for Hurricane Florence. But ultimately, this is kind of a, this is a new crisis. And she had made that call ultimately, the gift was given, it's not the city's money. The gift was given by MasterCard to Swiss Bear. And then Swiss Bear was looking, trying to do what they can to help small business during this time.
Okay. And then the second question is, that's small business located in the city limits, correct?
That would be only the city limits businesses, yes.
Will there be certain stipulations in what's required to be what is called a small business?
There are stipulations. There will be criteria that's established in it such that it can't be large or corporate things. I don't have all the details. Maybe Jeffrey, I'm sorry, Alderman Odom and Alderman Bingo, y'all may, y'all may know some more of the specifics. But no, no large corporate structures, no, no sub-corporate structures. I think the intent is for it to literally be small business type-oriented loans. Because the larger businesses, you know, those have a little bit more ability to absorb something of this nature. But small business is really struggling.
Alderman Harris, I'll tell you a good example. And this is where I gave Lynn and the Chamber direction to look at. But the City of Morehead, go to their website. The City of Morehead funded it totally themselves with $300,000. But their criteria and their information is on there. And I believe, I don't know what the final document looks like because it's a joint effort, I believe, between the Chamber and Swiss Bear as far as getting it out. I believe the Chamber is going to administer it, so it's citywide and it's not designated towards downtown or any other place. But they were businesses with 20 or less employees, I believe. And you had to just show it or pay rent. So we'd have to have a rent stub or something like that. It's to bridge that gap for so many small businesses that are not able to get any of these loans or access any of these other monies. That was the thought process. But the Main Street organization polled a lot of cities and they were doing it as well. I just, originally, they approached the city to have the city do it and administer it. And I'll be honest, I did not feel comfortable for the city to do something like that and be responsible for reviewing and doing all that. So I, my suggestion was the Chamber, and now they're working that out amongst themselves.
Alderman.
Well, I think Alderman Bingo just answered my question. I want, I was wanting to know who would be instrumental in establishing the criteria that would be, that needs to be met for these small businesses. But I think she answered it when she said the Chamber.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. The other thing is, because it is, even though it's our travel money, do we have to have like a public hearing or a comment period, if, if anything? Okay, and if it's agreed upon, it's gonna be on the May 12 meeting?
Yeah, that would be when the amendment, obviously, we would like to, we'd like to get an idea today if the board wishes to move forward with the direction. Because, I mean, if we're waiting three weeks at this point to make a decision, I think, I think Lynn's intent is to really try to get this thing ramped up as quickly as possible to get these loans. The application process is simplified, essentially some financial statements, some information regarding the business and the things that you do, ultimately making it a little bit easier than, say, an SBA loan. The intent would be to try to make these funds available as much, as much as possible and quickly as possible so that we can get the help to these businesses before they go under. If we wait until May 12 to make this decision, then I'm afraid that at that point, you know, it may be a little bit too late. But I think that was kind of the consensus that I heard.
Hey, Mark.
I need a little bit more information on the criteria. Unless we're, unless it's gonna be exactly what Morehead City is doing and I can go and look at that and get this information. I necessarily, me personally, can't vote to say yes without really knowing what the criteria is because I want to make sure that all of the...
Reach out to Lynn, Alderman, Alderman Harris, reach out to Lynn and just get it. I don't know what the final determination was. The paperwork they used was from Morehead. But I don't know if they have, you know, edited some things since, you know, it may be a little bit different for their means and needs. They were asking, excuse me, one second. I believe C1A and looking also to the banks, to ask the banks to put in money as well. You know, so that there could be more money in it so it could go further.
Okay. So Alderman Bingo, you're saying to go on the Morehead City's website and look for what? What?
They have it, a COVID-19 emergency loan or business. And it's a loan process, and you can go on there, the way they've got it set up. I actually spoke to their city manager so he could give me some insight. And he said he just copied it from Mount Holly. So Mount Holly is doing it as well. He just copied everything from theirs and used it in their city. So, you know.
And that amount, and that amount from the city, Mark, you says $25,000?
That was what was, that was what was kind of originally discussed. And Aldermen that were in attendance to the meeting are happy to chime in. But, you know, the city can make a decision whatever they want to do. But that was kind of the original ask, the $25,000.
I think it was, Mark, I think 25 might have been what was asked. I think we had said we were comfortable with 20. And then I think that's when Lee chimed in from the C1A perhaps and said they would do 20 as well.
Okay. So 20.
And this is literally, we, we had a call about this yesterday afternoon. And Mark, I think you just sent us something today because you had to verify if we even had the funding available for it. And we just found out this afternoon that we did have the funding if we wanted.
And like I said, this is, this is all very early on. It's very new. It's very, trying to get this established, understanding that we only meet twice a month. And every bit of time makes a, makes a difference for these businesses and hopefully them not going under. As Alderman Bingo's kind of pointed out, people, you know, coming to her with concerns and upset and crying that they may lose their livelihood or whatever. This is, this is an opportunity where you can, you can bridge that gap for two months where they may have some rental assistance or some mortgage assistance or something like that with small business. And potentially keep them where we can generate, after all of this, the sales tax and their existence and their employment of people and so forth and so on afterward. Then, then I think it's money well spent as far as the city's.
Well, you know, I think it's an awesome, I think it's an awesome decision that was made. But I just don't want any small business, not one small business left out based on some heavy criteria. I, you know, that is my, my thing. I just want, we want each small business to treat it fairly. And I do know we got to have criteria in place.
The only comment I would make, I think part of trying to set up a funding mechanism is that some of these organizations are going to be looking to see what participation City of New Bern is willing to make, what skin in the game we will, we will incorporate in order to start, start funding. So from that position, I would recommend to the board swift, swift action in order to demonstrate our resolve. And then I think the group, we go and other groups like the insurance agents and others that have scholarship funding and things like that to try to grow this. There are, I think, at least three states right now that have been declared, whatever the legal title would be, COVID, a COVID emergency, similar to a FEMA declaration. So I know that Governor Cooper, my understanding, was applying and had talked to the president about North Carolina also being declared. If that happens, funding would be coming from the federal government state to be administered. And I think that the cities that are already ahead of that game and have a proven track record of being able to put this money back into our economies here locally, I think they're going to be ahead of the game to be able to procure additional funding. So the board can do it. They won't, but I would, I would act, I would act swiftly on this and demonstrate that City of New Bern is definitely in the game.
Mr. Mayor. I have no problem doing this. I want to do anything that we can to help our small businesses. But I thought that the declaration had already been made.
It was.
And in fact, that the SBA was offering small, offering loans to businesses at a 0% interest rate. Is that not, is that, Mark, is that the way you understand it?
I know the SBA was definitely requested to move forward. There's, there's a lot of the entities, though, that may not be eligible for SBA.
I think, I think this is a different stimulus that is being worked on right now.
Uh, I think the SBA has already opened up for, for loans, for loans at 0% interest.
I think what happened is it's already been depleted, though, after, yeah, it's been depleted.
You are correct. And that's the problem. Some of these small businesses who don't have relationships with banks, who are sole proprietors, who don't have employees, have been shut out of this PPP and some of these other loans. So this is just such a small measure. But if it can help somebody pay their rent for two months, that would allow other funds, you know, to do something. We're, I'm just concerned in that, we've got to help our fellow businesses. I've been self-absorbed, self-absorbed in trying to save my own businesses that you forget there's other people out there. So I've tried to focus in the last several days on saying, what do we do to help other people? Because that's the backbone of our city. We don't have these businesses. They don't pay taxes. They don't create jobs. You know, we're all in this together, and it impacts every one of us. So I guess I'm on my soapbox today. But it's just important that we look after our citizens and our business.
I agree, and I'm all for it. I was just merely mentioning that I thought the SBA had 0%... I was just merely mentioning that I thought that the SBA had 0% interest loans available to, to businesses out there and...
They do, but it's not easy, Bobby. Let me tell you, it's not, it sounds good, the process is not...
It's lengthy.
Yes.
Okay. And then the way it was described, the way it was described to us was just a simple, local, quick opportunity to help some businesses, and I'm all for it.
Okay. Do we have to make a motion because it's money we're dealing with or no?
Yes, just, just some direction, and what we could do is, is that way I can let Swiss Bear and the others know that the city's in the game for X amount, and then we will have that on the agenda as a, as a, as a budget amendment, essentially taking money from these two, we'll, we'll find what line item we want to put it in, but it'd be from the travel of the board, the travel of the administration, and putting it into one lump, and then we would actually make that payment to Swiss Bear to put into their fund for this.
Well, then, my recommendation to the board would be to allow you to go ahead and prepare the necessary documents to be approved at the next...
I second that.
That's for the $20,000, correct?
Correct. And Mr. Stevens, you just want direction at this time?
I, I think that'll work because ultimately, I need to bring y'all a budget amendment through.
I would be in favor of that. You others?
I'm in favor. I'm in favor.
So am I.
Yes. Okay. All right. Anything else on our new business?
Yes, I forgot to say one thing, Mayor. And I, I just want to say again, since we have all board members here, thank you to you, Mayor Outlaw, and to you, Alderman Odom, for your hard work, for the foresight and the vision that you both saw into coming out and trying to find a site to put Standing White Rec Center. It's been a long journey, and we're, still have a long journey to go with that center, but I just want to personally thank you two and for all the hard work you both put into that. And I just want the citizens of our city to know that you two went out and found this particular site, these parcels of land, so that we can build back Standing White bigger and better. So, I just want to thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Stevens. Thank you so much. Any other new business at this time? Mr. Davis, did you hear anything concerning that funding mechanism that we need to make sure that we can approve at next, next meeting?
You're good, Mayor. That was my worry. City manager's got it in control. As long as you have a budget amendment on the next agenda, you're in good shape.
Okay, no formal motions or anything needed at this time. You'll be good.
That's right.
Okay. Any other business before the liberal board of Alderman tonight?
Mayor, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and second is their discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, say aye. Everybody be careful, and we'll see you in a couple of weeks.
And you as well.
Thank you, Mayor. Bye-bye.
Good day.